Should I add, what's, are we gonna be?
I didn't get through all of it. Interesting.
That was nice. Thanks everyone.
Yes.
Think we're on?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Great. Welcome, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order at 6:17. And we're gonna have a slight change in the order of the agenda and skip to presentations and reports. And we have Craig Fraley from the Amherst Recreation to give us a presentation.
Thank you very much. So I have kind of an update slash presentation to add to the 11 Babuza Lake Road property where we're putting our disc golf and pump track. And just the update first, we have three proposals in for the disc golf portion of it, and we're choosing price and what kind of work they can do, and hopefully have a choice on that within the next month. And the pump track, we just received the design, and there's really one person in New England that does that, so it's easy to pick who that's gonna be. So it's, and then finding materials for that. So we're, we are moving forward. Doesn't look like much is happening there, but it is. And then also, if you drive past and you see the barn, the barn has brand-new doors on the front. It looks much better than it did prior to that property being transitioned over. But the, the real reason I'm here is, we're try, we're still racking our brains of trying to think of a way or a name for the park. And Andrew Rowe from Amherst Today thought it'd be great to have a naming contest and, and see what, what people come up with. And obviously, the, the school board, since it's your property, would have final say on what the naming would be. But, you know, we'll get some ideas from the general public and, and then have, we can even have the public vote on it, or, or however we want to do it. The one thing I don't want is I don't want Parky McPark Park, if you know about the boat over England that they named Bodie McBoatface or something like that. We don't want that. So, and Andrew actually joked and said that would be his vote, or his recommendation for a name. So, so I'm coming, asking permission if we can see what your thoughts are on having a contest to name the park.
I think that would be fun.
Excellent. And it would also, it's gonna give a good public, good PR on it. So. The, the other question I had is, we've had some residents and also driving by, anyone who's driven on Jones Road and seen the Upper Wilkins fence, the fence there is in really, really bad shape. And it's got big holes in it, and it's falling down. And we've, we've sort of, our first thought was to replace the fence. And so I've, I've gotten a few quotes for that. And one was, we're kind of wondering if the district would be, our first thought was, let's replace the fence. Would the district be interested in splitting it with us, splitting the cost of the replacement? And right now, I currently, I, the highest quote that I, I've gotten two quotes, and the highest one is $10,400. But that was to replace the entire fence, and it goes up into the woods and weaves around. The second company that came in thought, we really don't need to, if we're gonna keep the woods woods, there's no sense in replacing that part of the fence. And really just replace the part where a car could potentially drive onto the field. So there is probably about $3,000 of savings by not doing that upper part. The other thought today, my park foreman, Keith Trot, he called me at about 4:30 this afternoon and said, do we really need a fence there? And his thought was, there's, the field is down from the parking lot, and then there's a hill up to it. Because my first thought and my worry is that we have, you know, kids kick balls around there, and balls roll up into the parking lot, and that becomes a hazard. And he really doesn't think that that would be, because the hill kind of naturally stops the, the balls there. And rather than doing that, we would do what we did at the Davis Lake Tennis Courts. We put boulders far enough apart from each other so that cars can't go onto the field, but it's still open, and it's, it has more of a historic appeal than a chain link fence. So, that came to me late this afternoon. I haven't even been up to really look and see how that would look, but didn't know if we were to go with Plan A of the fence replacement, if, if there'd be some ability to go 50/50 with the fence replacement.
So, I really love that boulder idea, by the way. But I imagine there's an added cost for removing the fence that's there. And I'd love to get, know a little bit more about what we're talking about when it comes to the costs before we vote on such a thing.
The, the removal of the fence, we were gonna do in-house anyways.
I see.
So that, that really, it's basically either borrowing or renting a mini excavator for a day and just popping all the posts out.
Yeah.
Our guys have lots of experience in fence removal from both cemetery fields. And we also took down the Davis Lake fence last year, or the, at Clark School, too, about to put the new tennis courts up, so.
So did you move the boulders there last year?
We did, yeah.
Did that work?
We, we can, actually, the, the lot, the 11 Babuza Lake Road lot is an old quarry. So we can probably mine most of the boulders right out of there and truck them over, so.
That's a neat idea.
So, what are the sports that typically use Upper Wilkins?
Mostly, it's just soccer and football.
Okay.
And so both of those, I mean lacrosse may use it.
That's the one I'd be worried about, is the soccer. If they kick it high, it's gonna go up and over anyway.
It's gonna go over anyway.
But I, I haven't seen a lot go up the hill there. Lacrosse, I would be curious to hear, you know, how, what the use is over there.
The parking lot is above the field.
Yes, yes. And I'd, I'd have to go out and look at it again, but I believe it's, it's about five feet higher than the field itself. And also, the, the larger, the, the smaller field, we can fit two fields on there. One is an 8v8, and one is an 11v11. And I believe the 8v8 field is the one closer to the parking lot.
Yeah.
So it's a younger kid playing. It's not, and, and also, I mean, the younger the child, the less chances that that ball's gonna have enough momentum to get up out of there.
Yeah, yeah.
So I have a couple of questions. One, I'd love to hear what you have to say about Jerry, being the school that you run. But also, I'd like, how, how, where would the funds come from? So I'd look for our business officer, and I'll help with that. You know, 'cause before we say, yeah, we'll cover half, or we'll cover half up to a certain dollar amount, I want to make sure we got the funds available to even do it.
So, you know, we do use it, like, on Field Day. The PE teacher will use it. We've had classes. We don't use it daily. We don't use it all the time. I certainly know what you're talking about with the hill and that. I would say the greatest risk time for me as principal is when I'm driving home and I'm going down Jones Road, and kids are kicking their soccer balls, not from the field, but from the parking lot, you know, out. But I agree, the, the incline and that, the gradation, I think, serves as a natural buffer. I don't, I don't know how many balls hit the fence that would go through now. I don't know. But it certainly is well-used. This, you know, I mean, we could all testify to the fact that there's a lot of illegal parking going on up there at different times. So, you know, I, I guess the safety piece I have really doesn't have to do with during school hours and that. It has to do with the parking lot and people really monitoring what kids are doing in the parking lot up there. But that would hold true no matter what was going on there at night, right?
Right.
Yeah.
I don't know how much this connects with it. Jim and I had just mentioned this, but, you know, we do have that stairway that goes down to. That stairway is something we're gonna have to look at in the near future. You know, that was an Eagle Scout project in 2002, and that particular troop had kept it on as a project for multiple years, but we don't really have a troop that's connected to it now. So, you know, we've, we've replaced some boards. Some of the boards are starting to warp. It's, if you've ever used those stairs, you know, they were designed for people who have some minimal mobility issues. So if you try to walk it, it's almost a little awkward. The little kids have no problem with it. But I just think long-term, that's something else we're going to have to look at in terms of access to that field from lower Wilkins. Those stairs are going to need some work. And have you gone up those recently, Craig?
Not, not so much.
The kids think it's the greatest thing in the world if they can, you know, run up with me and look down and...
I'm, I'm very concerned about those stairs.
Yeah.
Because during football season last year, we had people come from other outside towns to the school, park, go out to those stairs to see their kid play football or whatever, Upper Wilkins. And we had, like, two people take headers on those stairs because they get caught on some of the board, one of the boards or something like that. So I've been worried, I've been worried about those stairs for a while. As, as far as the, the fence is concerned, I love to see the fence go. The fence is an eyesore, and I can imagine all the people on that road would feel the same way. My concern would be, I think my concern is what Jerry's is, which is, some kid at 2:00 in the morning takes their car out there and is doing wheelies across the sod. I shouldn't say kid. It could be an adult, too. It could be anybody.
The, the boulders would be...
Yeah. So I think that, you know, if that, I'd be, probably feel better if it was boulders and maybe some shrubs between the boulders or something, because, just something that looked nice. Something to keep, you know, shrubs and boulders would probably keep soccer balls out of there. I'll tell you, with lacrosse, with a low-lying fence like that, I don't, I don't think you're gonna keep lacrosse balls flying 90 miles an hour across the field out of there. I mean, is that something we could look at, having boulders and some shrubbery or something? Certainly. And, and I think, I mean, if you look at the front of Wilkins School and that, the island there, you know, during the soccer tournament, they use that as a field, and there's absolutely nothing around it. And it's, it's flat right out to the road.
Yeah.
I think the, having the boulders close enough so that cars can't get through there, and then we would put a gate in one area just for access for us to maintain it. And then the, but shrubbery, certainly, we can, we can do. I mean, that's, the boulders and even shrubbery is easier to, to trim and maintain than a chain link fence would be, so. Okay, okay. Yeah. What would be, what would be the, the idea of, would you entertain the idea of, if we found the money to go halves, would you entertain the idea of maybe pricing out what it would be to replace those stairs and go halves for the whole thing? Yeah. Certainly.
So, what I'd love to be able to do is have you leave here with some sort of understanding of what we're willing to commit to. And I think to do that is to say up to a certain dollar amount.
Yeah, we, Betty, can you help us understand what, where, if these funds exist, is that the right thing to do, to ask?
So, yeah, currently, your budget, and for this project, it would have to be next year's budget, because we've just, we're just about out of this year. So currently, your next year's budget, while we do have some special A concerns, we have now with a huge increase of teachers that have retired, not just on 14-4, but actually retiring without 14-4. So we've had a lot of teachers retire, and that is going to actually improve your budget next year, although it's very expensive this year in the year that they're retiring. And it will bring the amount of your, of your expected budget savings down all by a lot in the current year. Next year, you'll see those savings, because we will be hiring younger teachers, and so that, that will make a big difference to your budget. I foresee that you will be able to handle this. You've also got savings in, because our health insurance came in at a reduced now. So we do have substantial savings in both the personnel salaries and benefits that we are looking to...
So, can we come up with an amount that, that we can, that we're willing to put in for it?
Do you have an idea, Craig, on the, the first piece with the boulders and the shrubs?
The fencing, the boulders would really be no cost.
Okay.
Because we can get those.
That's a great price, by the way.
Okay, yeah.
That's my favorite price. I love that.
And then the removal and...
We'll split that with you.
Yeah.
Right.
We'll go halves on that for sure.
So, so for the whole fence, then, you would, it wouldn't cost us anything for you to remove it, put in the boulders, and plant? So that's nothing? Okay. Done.
Well, I think if we did plant, it might cost.
There may be some cost, but again, it's very...
It's minimal.
Nothing like the, like...
Right. Nothing so good. I mean, a fence, you're looking probably $10,000, or $7,000.
Seven, seven, yeah.
Right, okay.
The, the stairway, I think that's gonna be a longer project, because we, that really has to be thought out, done properly. Not that the boulders aren't done properly, but I can see that taking a little more time. Could that be a hardscape project, too? In other words, if we could get, you know, could that be, take this, a project where you take the stairs out, and you excavate that hill and use boulders to terrace it, you know, terrace that up versus a wooden staircase? I can see a wooden staircase, you know, just being constantly needing to be replaced. Yeah, almost granite steps or...
Yeah.
Or even if not granite, you know, kind of like cutting it in, maybe using a little bit of timber, not as a stair, but kind of retaining, but, or boulders as retaining and stuff like that.
Well, what I'd like to do is, is, I love the idea of the boulders and the shrubbery, because I think that is a more aesthetically pleasing, and it sounds like the fence isn't gonna hold back all that much more anyways. So, and, and I love the price. The price can't be big. And, and as far as replacing the stairs, what I'm hearing you say is you need to do more research and look at the options, and use your expertise to decide, okay, what is the best long-term solution for that with the least amount of maintenance cost. So I don't know if we can really vote on the, on the stairs today, since you, and the, wouldn't come out until next year's, it would come out of the 16, 17 budget anyway. So, what do you think, so maybe the right thing to do would be really just to ask that you go, is that we work on, you come back with regarding the stairs options?
Yep.
And that's ungood to you, or did you want to?
It sounds good to me as a commitment from REC to go halves with us on the stairs and the whole thing. That sounds the best thing for me.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we have to vote?
I guess we don't know how much it is yet, though. So I think I'd...
Can we say halves up to a certain dollar amount?
Can we just split the two up? Since we're saying that the fence and the boulders isn't gonna be a cost, then we can make a decision on that and then discuss the stairs later.
Yeah, I think, I think we can, it sounds like with it being no cost for the boulders, we can make a decision on that. And with the stairs, I think, I would recommend that we wait until we know how much it's gonna cost before we commit to something, before we know.
Yeah, I mean, I'd, I'd like to see that really done properly so that we don't have to address it again. So, yeah, I'd wanna talk to an engineer or somebody that's more upstairs than I do.
Sure.
Yeah. But, yeah, I think that if we could set a goal of, you know, this time next year, those stairs are definitely in, or even next fall, those stairs are installed.
I like that plan, especially when we have access to those funds and we can say, okay, this is what we'd like to, you know, because if you come back and say, oh, we'll cover half, and it comes back at, you know, $15,000, then it's a little different thing, coming back and saying that it's seven, five or $7,000 and we want to pay up. And I think the best we could do is say half up to a certain dollar amount today, but it sounds like we need more information. That's what I'm hearing the board tell me.
And John Rovershaw will be a part of that, probably.
Yes.
Yeah, that is a bit of a problem, so I'll make sure. I never, the design on that, just, you know, straight up, that, it's just gonna, as Jim's saying, we're gonna have to replace that every...
We have already replaced quite a bit of it, believe it or not.
Yeah. And it's right in the side. It's, that's a hard one. So other designs might be certainly an old...
July 4th is the heaviest traveled day, heaviest traveled day on those stairs.
Oh, right, with the floats. Yeah. So do we need to vote on anything to remove the fence, or, no?
You're certainly always better with a vote than without one. So, and also, when, when we talked, when, when Craig talked about asking for permission to use the Amherst Today as a, doing a survey, I think I saw this and this, but that doesn't work in the minutes. So we want to have something in the minutes. As I said, the board agreed to go along with the survey in Amherst Today.
Okay.
So, and you can certainly do the vote for this one.
Okay. So, can someone make a motion to approve the Amherst Today vote, voting method as the means to name the, the park, Babuza Lake Park, or?
Make a, let's, let's make a motion to approve having a contest in town to let the town name the Babuza Lake Road Park property.
Okay.
Through Amherst Today. Is it gonna be just through Amherst Today?
Yes. Okay, through Amherst Today.
So Jim made the motion, Galen second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
And then do we want to do, have a motion to, go ahead?
I'll make a motion to have Parks and Rec Department remove the fence that's at Upper Wilkins and replace it with boulders at no cost to anybody.
To the district. To the district.
And I would like to say that, I mean, if the idea came at 4:30 this afternoon, I definitely want to go up there and do a little research. I mean, we may come back and say, we would kind of want to go with the fence, but I think that, that would, hopefully the boulders work.
Okay. Yeah, so we're, we'll approve, yeah. Did you get that?
To remove the fence at Upper Wilkins without any cost.
And replace with boulders.
And shrubbery.
And shrubbery.
And shrubbery.
Is there a second?
And we're gonna split the cost of the shrubbery there, right?
Well, that's...
Right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that what we're doing?
Yes.
So we have to probably change.
Yeah, then we have to...
Let's see how much the shrubbery is.
Okay.
How about replace it with boulders at this point, and we can come back with shrubbery later?
Yeah. I just say we make a motion to replace the chain link fence at Upper Wilkins with boulders and shrubbery with the, you know, with the intent of splitting the costs of that investment. And you're saying it's gonna be nominal, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I agree with that.
Okay. I'm okay with that.
I can write it down for you.
And the first one, to have a contest in town to name the Babuza Lake Road property through Amherst Today.
Yeah. I mean, do, are you gonna have other outlets where we're gonna name that?
Like the Amherst one, I think, so.
He's, he's probably gonna run it through a...
I'm guessing he wants to run it himself.
Survey through his website. We can post it in other places, but it'd be linked to his... Just saying that if we, if we, if we, as, as a board member, I would, I would feel that if we were gonna run a contest to name any property in town, that all media outlets that would want to be, that would want to participate in that would have the opportunity to do so. Yeah, what, we can, we can set up a email just for that. Email your response to Babuza naming at whatever. Yeah, okay. Yeah. So I would just take out the Amherst Today part, and then we approve, however Craig wants to run it, and we approve the contest to name the property.
Yeah, just that last part about Amherst Today doesn't need to be there.
And who should tell us who allowed the motion?
That was me. I made the first one. Yeah.
Kayla.
You guys get with that?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay. Yeah.
Craig, you're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, we didn't actually vote on the second.
We haven't, no.
No, we haven't voted, yeah, yeah.
So we had a motion to, can you just read it back for me?
Well, actually, Jim was gonna write down, so...
Now?
It's a, let me, let me just say it again, okay. So, a motion to allow Amherst Recreation Department to remove the fence at Upper Wilkins and replace it with boulders.
Remove the fence at Upper Wilkins without any cost?
Well, remove the fence at Upper Wilkins and replace it with boulders, combination of boulders and shrubbery, and to split the cost between the Amherst School Board and the Amherst Rec Department. Is that okay?
I, I think we need to have an up to a dollar amount if we're gonna attach money to this.
Yeah.
Because it, we don't, it's gonna be coming out of next year's budget, and...
I think you're saying it's gonna be nominal, right? I would say at most, if we're including shrubbery, it's $2,000. So if you said up to $1,000, that would... Yeah.
Yeah, I would prefer to have a dollar amount attached to it.
That's good.
Thank you.
I'm, yeah, I like that.
Okay, is there a second?
Yep.
I, I already did, but that's okay.
Oh, you did?
That's fine.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Thank you.
Are you solid with that? That's great. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just one, the scoreboards were installed this week that we came to about a month ago.
Yeah.
Oh, excellent.
And they were used, so.
Yeah, so somebody posted a picture of that.
Yes, yeah.
The town seems very happy.
Thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, you can tell it's summer, like, we're off our game here.
Yeah, right.
All right.
Barely talk.
Okay. So, back to announcements, principals' reports. So Porter, did you want to fill us in on anything, or does anyone have any questions for Porter?
I guess I asked the question that I wanted to say. I, I did have the pleasure of having a mini tour that Porter gave me of the specials area. I saw the, the Makerspace, the Innovation Lab, the, the, well, I saw the gym, absolutely, the gym floor, which is incredible. And I saw the Gaga pits outside, and the Life Skills Room, and the Art Room. And I was really impressed with, with the facilities and all the changes that have been made over the past few years. Of special note, the Innovation Lab and the developing Makerspace, and of course, the gym floor, which is absolutely gorgeous. So, so thank you for that.
I was, I want to get over and take a look at the floor.
Yep.
I got to go a couple weeks ago for, was it the sixth grade chorus doing a concert for the fifth graders? And then Larry Ballard took me around the school, too.
Great.
So that's nice, because I hadn't been there before, so.
Oh, good.
Oh, excellent.
Great.
You're always welcome. Don't need to be announced either. You know, you see what you see, and that's the best way to do it, really. Come in, see us in action any time.
So if I could add, we, so the new floor is in, and there seems to be some areas, there's a pitchy substance on top of the floor that I heard about this afternoon.
Okay.
So, first I've heard of it. And so I want to just make sure, so ask Roger and probably John and Porter to take a look tomorrow. And I know Betty is, I think is aware minimally, but we can get in touch with the company and take a look at that. So, want to make sure you are all aware of that.
Okay.
Really, just a quick comment. I'm really looking forward to the ISTE conference, see the results of that, you know, the technology conference that's happening. And it's gonna be very exciting.
So, so are we. I'm excited, too.
Yeah, I'm really looking forward to hearing, you know, getting a report about what, what was most exciting to the team and, and what they were looking forward to implementing.
I went certainly years ago last night, and when somebody couldn't go, and I was astounded. It was in Washington DC, but I couldn't believe the number of offerings that they had then. I can only imagine now. Back then, it was all smart boards. I went to all the smart board technology, and how, what fashion that is compared to what they do today. Brad Freeman's going, and he's gonna be looking especially at the Makerspace innovation design ideas down there, because they, of course, that maker movement is huge in this country right now.
And just so the public knows, that the, a big thing about these conferences is that we pick up what other people are doing, and our, the school districts are doing the technology available, but it isn't about the newest, shiniest thing. It's what supports our curriculum, what helps deliver our curriculum and supports our students through the curriculum. And I'm really excited about that. It's gonna be very exciting. Fantastic. I can't wait to hear about it.
Yeah, I'm happy to be going as well. And I told Bruce my first year, here I go, and now the fifth year, I'm gonna actually go this year. And we're planning a panel discussion at the SAU Board Meeting, at the September meeting.
Oh, good.
So all of us that go, including me, will come back with topics that we want to share with the boards.
Oh, great.
As it relates to... As it relates to strategic planning and other things.
Oh, good.
You'll hear about that probably at your board meetings this September, but a panel discussion at the end.
And if I could, Peter, segue into that. We had a discussion recently with Christine and Peter and myself about accessing some of the grants that are available through some of the trust funds to possibly bolster our, our innovation design area down there. We made some inquiries and talked to certain trustees and things and it looks like there's potential there. Some of it's for professional development, others for purchase of materials that are used. I lost my power, I think it's not working. So we'll keep you apprised of what we hear. We're gonna actually plan a meeting this summer with the group. I'm not sure exactly who the woman is that's in charge of it, but to talk to us about some of the potential of accessing some of those funds to, you know, we nickel and dime things and put them in place. It'd be great to actually get a nice seed money to start there, that'd be terrific, so...
We've used some of those funds before, so Katie Hannon, our planning director, will be with us on that look see, so we'll have more info as we go along.
Yeah.
Porter, what, in the, in the Innovation Lab, I know that the, there's a cabinet in there with basic tools like wrenches and whatnot, it seems pretty bare. So if somebody in town wanted to either make a donation of money or actually had tools, like an abundance of newer tools lying around, that they just wanted to get rid of or whatever, what's the process for donating that stuff? Can they just come to the school and bring it?
They certainly can. I mean, we don't take junk, but we, these are, these are things, we have the right of refusal, if you know what I mean? But yes, people do donate, there's a good share of the stuff that's in there now. I was making a joke to Peter about making my trips to Howard Freight, you know, every time we go in there, you get the free gift and I've been buying the electric meters and things like that. So anything we would take. And if they make donations, if you look up on the screen, that's exactly what those unanticipated revenues are. If someone wanted to make a donation, they certainly could say, this is directed towards the Makerspace, directed towards technology, directed towards, whatever they like. And they could do that, all you have to do is approve it and you do the consent agenda.
Okay.
So some of these tools that you were looking for, can you give us an idea what they, give the public an idea what, I mean, you wouldn't wanna compound minor saw in there, I mean, but what, what type of tools are you looking for?
Jim's talking, right now, if you notice up there, one of the things that was accepted in the consent agenda, when you, when you do, is the Amherst Junior Women's Club, their fundraiser for the school and Terry Bame and some of the people who are involved with that asked me what we could use it for. And I said, we'd love to get into our innovation design lab. So they, we purchased a used set of tools, about $4,000 worth of tools and a rolling cabinet for $1,200 of somebody who said that they were really good stuff. And so we started off, so we now have some tools. But as far as extra screwdrivers, those kind of things for them, this is a professional craftsman kit that we got, you know, with really four sets of tools in it. So, but anything we'll take, because they get lost, you know how it is. You know, in my own garage, I can't find half my tools, I always blame my kids, but you know, that's, so, we love it.
Yeah, okay, that's good, that's good to know. Yeah.
Also, congratulations to the girls softball team who won the championship. That's always exciting when that happens to one of our middle school teams.
It sure was.
So congratulations to them.
Coach Sussa did a good job from what I understood this year.
Yeah, that's great. And then I, I'm also pleased to see the Communication Committee that Bethany Bernisconie is leading, so working to come up with best practices for the middle school. And I look forward to hearing more about that in the fall.
The discussion came out of, you know, I think the board again for allowing us the opportunity to not open something we didn't think at that point with the parent portal was going to work for us right now. So this is, they're working on some new methods. And high school, of course, is very heavy into looking for forms of, some form of grading and assessment for the PACE movement, which we'll wanna join as part of a strategic plan of advance and Streamline, Unite, we'll line up with them. That's our plan.
Any other questions for Porter? Jerry?
So could I speak about kindergarten? Which is always at the forefront right now. So I just wanted to share that all six of our kindergarten teachers, including Brittany and Jennifer, who were here tonight, came to Step Up Day Tuesday afternoon. And it was extremely well-attended, 103 of the children were represented. Out of 108 children we have registered, so they definitely was interested on the path of parents. So I got to present, Christine was there with me to present to two groups of parents. And we actually had a parent walk-in that day who hadn't registered yet and thought she might just blend in and, you know, try out a room in that. So we actually are up to 109 now.
Okay, alright.
So I just wanna say that I feel like we are on the right track. People are really positive about it. And also that the, the ending of the school year, because I think part of it is because the weather has been so wonderful, you know, we really have not had excessive heat and humidity that I would have to say a field day at Wilkins and fun day at Clark School were really almost ideal. And we often find those days to be a little challenging for some people, particularly if it's very hot in that. We didn't see a single kid in the office on that day, which is very unusual. And during the faculty variety show, you know, we think everybody had a great time with that. And it, you know, brings the staff forward in a slightly different light. And Clark School did the same thing. So I, I just think the end of the year went very smoothly for everyone. Step Up Day went smoothly for everyone. And so I think we're, we're off to a great start for the summer. And it's always good to end on a positive note, but we'll keep everybody posted over the summer about enrollments with kindergarten. And I have joked with people that usually by now, we've had a few people withdraw. We haven't had anybody withdraw who's, I'm sorry, I think we had one early on. But I will say Jennifer was very gracious when she came in and said, just wanna thank you. She said, you know, in Tootsbury, I was going to have 26 students. And I said, please tell the other kindergarten teachers that number, so we can forge ahead. I wanna give the six of them a lot of credit for communicating with one another via email and that already, so that when they came in, they already looked like a very unified group of six teachers. And they presented in three rooms, so they were two of them together. It went really well. And I'm really excited about what we have happening here.
That's great.
So, this is just, you know, purely, I've been hearing stories of what happened at the talent show, and I really wish that they'd be videotaped so that we could see that.
Yeah, I think we should videotape it.
Starting next year, I'm sure.
Whenever somebody wants to videotape it, yes. Yes, so, I mean, it is a great time. And I will have to say, I step out of my comfort zone on Field Day for the faculty show every year, but this year we did, you know, did have a few people get slimed. And I think some of our students who were doing the sliming were a little anxious, they didn't really wait for the crowd to give the signal to slime. So when the opportunity presented itself, there we were. But I want to say, again, it contributed to a great, a great day.
The kids loved it. I, the stories I heard when my daughter got home, she, I got drawings. She drew out the whole sliming thing and how it worked, so...
Right, well, we, we seem to have a lot of children who know a lot about sliming. I think the Fun Day, you know, Clark School was a great success too. And I really have to say that the, the entire Clark School staff gets together to really put that together. Wilkins, of course, is larger, so if we had every staff member present something, we'd be there into the darkness. But, you know, Clark School did a beautiful job with, with theirs also and really targeting it to that particular age group. And we'll see what we come up with next year when we have full-day kindergarten. So, thank you. So I'm excited about the upcoming year and that. And I should mention too, you know, we, the closing date for Meg Trainor's position is June 20th, so we have not set up the interview dates yet, we'll wait. I'm going through the applications as they come. What I'd like to do is pick at least a handful of candidates we'll interview and then I'll communicate the email, this is one more interviewing, and who from the school board could join us or that. So I think we have some very strong candidates. And we look forward to, right now, we just finished interviewing for the preschool coordinator position, so I will be offering that to someone this week. So I guess we'll give that one to Peter and then we'll get the assistant principal position filled as quickly as we can. And hopefully that's, hopefully that'll be it for vacancies.
That's great.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Back to the kindergarten real quick, how many people usually sign up during the summer?
Well, August is typically a popular month. I mean, the summer's a popular time for people to move. So I would, I would hazard to guess that, you know, I think it's the special ed teacher there that you just hired said she just moved in or she's moving in in August.
Yeah.
You know, and we are aware of people in town whose properties have sold, you know, they won't be exchanging hands until the summer. So I would say we could anticipate, in a typical summer, perhaps 10 children? But again, I will have to say, would anticipate a few children not coming, but I guess if 103 families were represented right now. And in fairness, out of the few who didn't attend, they notified us that they weren't attending.
Wow, so they'll be here next year.
Very good.
Right.
But I, I will keep everybody posted on that. So remember, right now we have 18 per class. That new student will bring somebody to 19. So I would say if we can ideally not go above 20, that would be great. And the teachers right now are all pretty happy about having full-time Paris, so I'm hoping we don't go above 20. I really, I really do hope we can stay there.
Okay, we'll keep us posted on that.
Oh, I will.
Thank you.
Okay. So any committee reports? Any updates from anyone?
Advance, advance. We did meet. I don't know that we got much more accomplished than the last time. I mean, just to review, we are, you know, I don't wanna say we're at the end with full-day kindergarten, but that's a box check there. So that's fantastic to have that, that wrapped up. So thanks for giving a portion of my, my update. Thank you. The second piece that I talked about last time was STEM. And I think where we ended up with STEM was at least in our, our district to prioritize STEM behind full-day kindergarten. So I think what's important for everyone to know is that when we looked at all of the strategic initiatives, we said, boy, you know, we can't, you can't really boil the ocean, so if we have to prioritize, what would be next? And STEM rose, rose to the level of where we go next. And I, I think it's prudent for me to say that we have a target date that we would like to hit of September 17th, for having a STEM curriculum that we can roll out. Whether that's gonna be realistic, given, you know, anything that can, that can come up and get you, still is in question. The big thing that we have to, we have to overcome, and Christine, you could probably speak to this, would be, you know, professional development for the teachers for any STEM curriculum we did choose. So that's the rate-limiting step. Would you say that was accurate? Okay. And then the last thing was, and I don't know if you were at the meeting, Christine, we talked about this, you weren't. Yeah, Porter was. The only other thing that I think we discussed was behind STEM, what's next? And I believe world languages was something that we talked about and trying to determine where that fell in, in priority. There really wasn't any major action, there was some action items, but there weren't any major action items that came out of that. But the thing that I think the board should know, that I thought was interesting, was the discussion migrated to a place where we said, if we were to do something with languages, maybe we should look, you know, I think people think of languages as being a high school endeavor. And our conversation was more around, maybe we should prioritize this pre-K through 4. That's where, really where emphasis with languages should be. And then the question was really, why pre-K through 4? And it's because if you want your student population to be bilingual, then that's where it needs to happen. And if your student population's gonna be bilingual, then, or attempt to make them bilingual, what would all those factors need to look like? It would be pre-K through 4. You'd probably have to select a single language versus multiple languages, because as soon as students learn a single, a single language as they get out of fourth grade, they can learn multiple languages a lot more easily. And that led to a discussion around how you'd have to staff the school potentially with, you know, if, let's say it was Spanish, Spanish-speaking teachers, you know, and how to recruit them. So it was actually a very, very interesting conversation, if in fact, that's the path we ended going, you know, ended up going down. Versus what I thought we were gonna talk about, which, you know, tends to be your course offerings in the high school and that type of thing. So it was a very, very different discussion and quite frankly, a more fulfilling discussion, I feel, that puts the school on a much better footing around languages, so. That's really it.
Great. Thank you for the update.
It was fascinating.
Briefly on Streamline, we had the presentation at the SAU meeting and the, the deadline for the two committees, Amherst and Mont Vernon, for application from the public was...
Tomorrow.
Is tomorrow. So anyone interested in applying to be on those two committees, feel free. And once those are formed by the moderators for Mont Vernon and Amherst, that process will start to move forward again, so. Did you wanna add anything else?
The law calls for a board member to be on the committee. So I didn't know if you wanted to have a mini discussion this evening? You have been on the Streamline Committee.
Yep.
And I, I did send out the law a little bit, I wanna make sure you all saw that. I will send out probably in the next week or two, some other ideas, information to go along with that law. And I'll probably do it in a, in a question, you know, frequently asked questions about that law and what we're doing with one district or the Streamline Committee. Okay, so that's, because it's, there's a lot to it and I don't wanna confuse people, but I think doing a, kind of a frequently asked question piece, that'll give everybody the same information. But we do have, we are in need of a board member to serve on that three-person committee, which the moderator would like to see four. The fourth one would be an alternate, non-voting member. So, I did not, I'm not on the agenda, didn't know if you wanted to discuss that this evening, but that would help.
Since you've been on the Streamline, does it make sense for you to stay there?
I'm happy to do it unless someone else has a burning desire to, to be on that committee. You know, having been on Streamline, I'm familiar, although not an expert with the law, clearly, but I am familiar with the work that has been done with the different models that, that Betty ran through and a lot of the prep work. So I'm happy to do it, so. Unless anybody else wants to jump in. No? Okay, okay, alright. Okay. Alright, great.
So we wanna, for the minutes, maybe just, someone can nominate Amy for the...
I'd like to nominate Amy Facy. The, what's the committee called? Well, it's Streamline Committee, but is there a formal?
There is.
Yeah, there's a, the...
Do you know Betty?
The... No.
It's the committee that was...
It's the pla, it's the planning committee, right? Is that what it was called in the warrant?
It's the planning committee that was approved by a warrant article this spring.
Okay.
Appointed by the moderator, so he would appoint you to that committee.
So it's the...
Jim to nominate you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the, the planning committee.
For the planning committee that was voted, that was approved by a warrant article. Yeah, that was approved by a warrant article in March of 16.
To explore. District consolidation.
Streamline Group, is that what it is?
That was, that was approved in March 16 to explore.
March.
March 2016. To explore consolidating the school districts into a single unified school district.
Well...
No.
Or no, to explore, what was it?
District. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So just say district consolidation.
District consolidation.
Is that the one, the, I was just looking in the packet from the SAU, the Cooperative School District Planning Committee, right? School District Planning Committee, right?
Is that what it's called?
That's what it says in the little ad.
Then let's use that.
Yeah.
So, it's the Cooperative School District Planning Committee.
There you go.
So, for the planning committee, so instead of...
Just put cooperative school district in front of planning committee.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thanks, Gail.
And just so you'll know, there are layers to this process that I want to make sure we give them to you, that everybody has the same information. So...
Is this the only, how many RSAs are involved in this? Is this the only RSA that we have form of guidance for, or are there others?
That's a section that talks about that. So, there's, there may be others that apply.
Okay.
But this is the first part of the whole process. If you look back at the warrant article and the words underneath the warrant article, it talks about forming two coop, or another cooperative district.
Yeah.
We may find that that's not where we're going, so that I want to just take you step by step.
Okay.
And I will have that information as one of the questions. Okay? Any answers? Okay.
So, is there a second, second motion? Any further discussion?
Maybe you're the one being nominated. Is there any further discussion?
Yippee! All those in favor?
Thank you.
Okay. Motion passed. Okay. Um, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak? Let's see, anyone? Um, can I have a, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? Any discussion? Okay. Second. Any discussion? No? All those in favor? All right. All right, we had our presentation.
I did go out, I walked out with Craig. He's going to try and get something for the board in, in writing for their August meeting.
Okay. Great. So, we had committee reports, and I think we, we thought of those as our strategic planning pillar reports, right? So, I think we're covered there. All right. So, now we have some informational items. So, we probably need to invite Christine up to talk about grading and reporting and then teacher leader effectiveness.
And anything else we have for her.
Our monthly Christine show.
I'll do, do you want me to do grading and reporting first?
Whatever, whatever works.
Yeah. Um, so, we're really excited. We had a, and I think I may be shared with the board, we had a really good first meeting with our assessment, grading, and reporting committee, and that's an SAU-wide, wide committee with representation from all of our schools, multiple stakeholder groups, including parents as well as community members and SAU members. So, really good, fun first meeting, kind of invigorating. I know most people who attended really said how much they enjoyed it. We did have two teachers from South Heagan who aren't on the committee come and present to the committee some work that they had done through their career growth that ties in with our work. So, that was a really nice piece as well. As far as summer work for that committee, we have two things going on. I had mentioned it, and we'll be sending an email out to committee members soon about it. One thing is, we're going to be kind of deepening our knowledge around either standards or competency-based grading, and there are two books, so I brought both of them, if you guys wanted to look at them. One is On Your Mark by Tom Guske. He's really one of the leads in this work around competency-based grading or standards-based grading. And he's from the, I believe, University of Kentucky. And we actually got a chance to see him just about a month ago, so ago. Jerry was with me. We brought a group of teachers. It was New Hampshire ASCD that brought him in. So, really good conference, you know, excellent to hear him speak, a lot of great information. And he has these wonderful guiding questions, and all of us were sitting there, and, and we looked at the questions and realized that can truly guide our work through this committee, which is really exciting. We also have set up kind of a collaborative page through our, it's not quite a website, it's through our Office 365 application, and it, it's a neat collaborative group. So, when we went to this workshop, we all started just posting in the, the document, and everyone was able to get alerts to see. So, people who weren't there, may have been a little overwhelmed by email and all of the alerts, but it's a nice way that we actually can collaboratively post and stay in touch through that group. So, our book, uh, groups are going to be forming for this summer, and there's two choices for books. So, it's either On Your Mark by Tom Guske or Rethinking Grading, which is also a nice quick read, really good as well. And I know, I had shared both books with Amy, and we talked about, you know, whether the board might want to read the books as well, and whether we wanted to do something at board meetings, and which book? Both of them are very similar. There is a lot of overlap between the books, so you certainly wouldn't have to, you know, read both. But they really deepen. I know we had a nice introduction to competencies when we talked about that a few months ago, but it really will deepen your understanding of competencies and really get you to question traditional grading systems. So, really interesting. Both are good books, and I do, Amy and Beth, I have your books, because these came in.
I saw the two.
And Amy, I don't remember if you got this one, the On Your Mark book. You probably didn't.
Did I? I signed up for one, didn't I? For the, or did you assign up?
I didn't, yeah, I didn't send the sign out.
Oh, you didn't send the sign out?
Out yet, no.
Okay.
But I'm going to give people both books if they want to kind of look through them and decide which book they'd like to read.
Okay.
So, that one came in, this one hasn't come in yet.
All right.
So, we're still waiting for that.
Thank you.
But I don't know if the board is interested, and I, you know, I'm happy to order additional copies if people are interested.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
And do you guys have a preference, or...
You're reading that one, so I wouldn't mind reading the...
Yeah, I mean, this one is, both are really good. You know, I think this is an excellent one. If I had to pick one, I'd probably suggest this one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What you suggest would be great.
Well, I, just as an idea, kind of like you said, you know, if we're reading this, if you grab that, and then maybe if we want to, we can switch.
Right. And I can order both for the board. And I, I've ordered ones, you know, for both of you. Beth and Amy need this one too, just in case you wanted to look at it.
We're on the committee.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's why they, yeah. I was doing it, the whole committee I ordered, but I didn't order for the board yet.
I'm firm, I, I'll read whatever you put in.
Yeah. And it's actually a pretty easy read, and it's really interesting. It's amazing how fast you'll go through it.
It was really interesting after the Guske conference, the email, the amount of emails that came in and like, the four days after that.
Yeah.
But the ideas that the people on the committee had, they, you know, the thoughts and stuff, they were really, I'm really excited that I get to sit down and read this.
Yeah.
Cool.
Yeah, and we'll have a few meetings throughout the summer for the book groups, and then what might be nice is, you know, I'd like this September or October, board meeting, September might be a little busy, so I don't want to wait until October. But then, you know, Amy and Beth, you'll have further insights too from some of those book club, club discussions over the summer to even, you know, add to our discussions.
Should we be on separate book clubs?
Probably.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I'll, yeah. And what I'll do, I'll probably do a collaborative sign up, so you'll be able to see where other people are and try to space out. And the other thing too, Sandborn is holding a competency institute. It's a three-day institute. I spoke with Peter about this. It's one that the New Hampshire Department of Education and our PACE work, they really recommend that districts attend, so it deepens your understanding of competency-based education and really helps you to do some design. Typically, only five people go. I am going to send an email out to the committee and see who's interested in attending that and see where we are and see if there's room for, I have their five spots held, but if there's additional interest. I know with vacations and so on, it can sometimes be tough. I think it's, might be the last week in July. I have to check, it's in my bag, I didn't grab it. So, that's the other piece too, that will be happening this summer. So, whichever, you know, whoever attends that will have a nice team to then bring that information back. So, it will be, and I'll be mapping out also our meetings for the school year for next year. So, and our first meeting, you know, another full-day meeting, but really recapping all of the work we've done for the summer to bring everyone up to speed.
Great. Thank you.
Any questions about that?
Thank you.
The next is just an update on our teacher leader effectiveness work. I didn't include this in the packet on purpose, because I figured it would be a little overwhelming and hard to understand, because it doesn't mean much without some context. This is work kind of hot off the press that we just finished up. Our Multiple Measures Subcommittee, which Amy is a committee member on, has been working really hard over the past few months. So, one of our challenges, and I know our newer board members probably aren't totally aware of all of the work we've been doing with teacher leader effectiveness, but I guess it was about two years ago, we started Thoughtful Classroom, which is just our framework that we use for observations. The Thoughtful Classroom framework, we really liked because it's more of a coaching-type model where it's really reflective. So, the observer goes into the classroom and just observes, they're not reading the teacher on anything, they're observing and providing feedback to the teacher. And they do provide posing questions, and they do, and collaboratively, the, the teacher and the administrator, when possible, will meet and actually come up with, you know, the next steps. What, what would you propose to do next? So, really great system. I know our administrators are enjoying that system because it is so collaborative, which is a really nice piece to it. But one of the challenges, since we chose not to use, they have a rating scale that can be used, but there's not a lot of information on how we would actually determine a rating, because it was meant to be a more collaborative system, but so many states require you to boil it down to a number. In New Hampshire, we're just required to not necessarily come up with a number. For teachers, we have to come up with a rating, either ineffective, needs improvement, effective or highly effective. We do have to report out each year to the New Hampshire Department of Education how many teachers we have in each of those categories. So, we wanted a way that we felt comfortable taking our Thoughtful Classroom observations that you would look at your multiple observations that you have, and then actually determine the rating for the teacher. So, it was a lot of work to do this, and, and we worked with Scott Marion from the Center for, Center for Assessment on how to actually do that. So, this is actually a research-based way to move from, you know, like a, something that's absent of a rating scale to actually get a, a rating. So, you start with something called a profile, and you, you actually look, it's essentially a rubric. So, the first page is the teacher profile for the four cornerstones. So, what would happen, and this is all a draft, I should have put a watermark across this, but we did just develop these and finalize them, and our administrators haven't even seen them yet. We'll be working with them over the summer on these. I think we had our last meeting like a week and a half ago. Yeah. So, what would happen is, it, at the end of three years, you would look at all of the teacher's observations, review them, and then look at the profile. So, look at the four cornerstones. Where would that teacher fall? And, you know, the needs improvement is pretty clear. We were really careful at the language that we used and really careful. We went over this document, we spent hours and hours on these documents, coming up with these teacher profiles. They still have to be tuned with our administrative team, and then we actually have to do inter-rater reliability to make sure that this is actually an effective way to determine a, a rating for each of the teachers. So, you would determine your rating on the four cornerstones, you would determine your rating on the five episodes, which are two different sections in Thoughtful Classroom. And then the last section is dimension 10, which is professional practice. So, you would then also, and our dimension 10, we're still working on that, you can see it's a, a draft. So, you would do it for all three, and then the last page, there are matrices that actually help you to piece them together. And this took a lot of work. I know it looks really simple, but we felt really strongly, we went through every single way, how you actually match up, if you, what your rating is on your four cornerstones versus your five episodes, and how you get the rating. So, you actually have to use the, the first matrix, then once you have a rating on that, you then go and use the last, the second matrix. So...
Right, because the, the four cornerstones and the five episodes equal classroom practice.
Yes. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
And then the professional practice is the dimension 10.
Right.
So, we don't want this to be unwieldy, and it seems like a lot, but it, once you have a clear picture of each of those teacher profiles, it should be fairly quick to be able to do that. But we do want to get input from the administrative team, so that is on our summer list to do. And we do have to go back to the dimension 10 group as well and do some work with them, because we didn't have, besides me, we didn't have anyone on the Multiple Measures group who was also in the dimension 10 group that had worked to revise dimension 10. So, that was the other thing that we had done. So, really exciting work. It's actually been fun to try to figure out how to bring the pieces together. And the only other piece, you know, these are the three parts to our system. It's the episodes with cornerstones and then professional practice. And we're still working a little bit on the professional practice piece. We have a few more things to finalize there. But you, the only other thing that we had looked at was student outcomes and including that in an evaluation system, and we're no longer required to include student outcomes. And we feel with our PACE work, if we tried to implement student outcomes, it would be really challenging. We feel that that PACE work is where we need to put our efforts. And with a student outcome, usually you use something called a student learning objective, where teachers create student, like goals essentially for their students, and then analyze their assessment data to determine whether they've reached their goal or not. We're doing so much work around assessment with our PACE work that we felt that needed to wait, so that now's not the right time to bring that in on top of the PACE work. And we felt pretty strongly about that, so that we wanted to hold off, and that this would be essentially how we determine our, our ratings for our teachers.
Question? So, on each of, so on the four cornerstones, they get graded, they get a one, a two, a three, or four?
Well, they get ineffective needs improvement, effective or highly effective, which is a one, a two, a three.
Okay.
Yes. I know, that's a little confusing, and I, we should probably put numbers.
Yeah, probably put the numbers in.
Yeah. So, it's funny, we've been so deep in this, like we don't catch things.
Like, it makes sense.
No, that's a good idea.
Yeah. Oh, that would be really helpful to do. That's why we need to do like a tuning with our administrators, because they'll look at it and say, wait, this doesn't match. Yeah.
Okay. And then you're only going to, you only do this every three years?
Yes, because we have a recertification cycle every three years, which also matches the professional development cycle.
Right.
And also in order to, you know, we felt strongly about recertification and evaluation happening at the same time.
Okay. But there's a constant evaluation going anyway. It's just, this is...
The summative, when you kind of bring it all together.
Yeah.
But yeah, and at any time, if there are concerns, we look to place a teacher on an improvement plan, and we have a process for that.
Okay. And do you guys look at, actually, never mind, that was...
Can I make sure I understand that?
A non-question.
So, so, this is what I heard you say. I heard you say that because there's a recertification every three years, they get the summative assessment of their performance at the same time. But in year one and two, is there any point during year one and two when the teacher has a meaningful evaluation to understand where their performance is?
It's not formally set, it's more informal through those ongoing, you know, informal observations that happen and the feedback that's given then.
So, what's the difference between formal and informal?
Informal observations are usually a shorter period of time and sometimes you might meet with your administrators, sometimes you're just reflecting on the feedback. And often there's dialogue back and forth with the feedback that's provided to teachers with the informal observation. So they're just shorter and a few times a year. And then in your third year, we've been doing the formal observation, which is usually a full class period long. You meet with your observer before as well as after.
When you say shorter, so how, if it's, if it's shorter, like how long is that?
Often like 10 minutes. Sometimes I know Jerry says he, it's challenging to leave the classroom, right? You're in for 10 minutes and you get almost involved and it can be hard.
And the informals are unannounced. So there is no ability for the teacher to be prepared in advance that you're coming in with the formal. You would have a pre-conference with the teacher about a targeted lesson that they're planning on presenting. So you would go in with an expectation of, in advance of certain things. And then you would have a mandatory follow-up conference. With the informals, many teachers may choose to have a conference with you, but there's not a specific document you have to use. And again, those are all unannounced. So we've had people, I've done two informals right in a row because of what's happening, you know, because I don't necessarily want to leave, but it's getting a little lengthy, so I've said, let's count it as two.
So it sounds to me for the, from the teacher's perspective and what they're learning, all the informal and the stuff that happens in one, you know, year one and year two, they probably learn more from that than they do from the formal stuff, whereas the formal stuff is more of a state.
I know.
And us.
And the formal allows you to go a little bit deeper with the teacher and actually look at their, their planning and some of the decision-making that they make. And it looks a little bit deeper at sometimes the curriculum and the instruction, the planning part and the assessment part, where the informal, you can't always see, you're not seeing the whole lesson from start to finish. So you're seeing a lot more of the four cornerstones in your informals. So that classroom environment, the engagement, the enjoyment, rules and organization procedures, that classroom culture. So often that's what you're looking at and sometimes you will see that delivery of instruction and how that, you know, might flow and move, but often you are looking more at the classroom environment during the informals. And that formal, you see like a start to finish. And a teacher who is on a non-continuing contract, they have more observations than someone who's tenured. So years one, two and three is just the recertification cycle, not a brand-new teacher. A brand-new teacher actually gets two formal observations in their first year along with informals.
Okay.
How many, sorry.
Yeah.
How many, so if you're a teacher that's been with us, let's say they're tenured, how many informal observations do they get in a year then?
At least three.
At least three.
Three to four is the goal.
Yes, three to four is the goal.
Three to four.
Up to four.
And they last 10 minutes?
That's, that would be the shortest.
Yeah.
I think we...
Ten to fifteen.
Yeah. I've had, I have tried to do one in 10 minutes.
I know, it's so hard to do.
I would say 15 to 20 is, is the standard. And I think we're trying to use that tool, at least I am in a way, so that when you go in and do the informal, you can type everything right in and check the boxes and put your comments and you can email it to the teacher, sometimes almost immediately afterwards, so that they, they get it right away. I would say with the formals, if there's one thing I could mention with those, I think with the formals, because the teachers get to slot, and you may say, I'd like to see a science and integrated or a STEM lesson, they are usually picking something they want feedback on. So they, they typically are picking something that could be a little new, something they're trying, something they've modified, but it's often a lesson that they are actively seeking feedback on how to improve their practice. And they certainly can get some of that with the informal, but again, sometimes you're missing pieces.
Yeah.
You know, so you might walk in in the middle of a lesson or you might walk in for the follow-up and you've missed the instruction. So you don't get all the pieces and, so I think there's benefits to both. I definitely think the informals are easier to complete and fit into your schedule. As an administrator, I think the formals, the pre-observation and then the actual observation and then trying to schedule the follow-up can be tight to get it in during the time. But it does give you an opportunity to spend dedicated time with that person, whereas the informal, you might just send it out and you may or may not get feedback on it or, or kids, the kids also think we're observing them, which we are technically.
Right.
But, you know, they, they tend to rise to the challenge too. So I think, I think it's a great tool, I really do. I think there are definitely benefits to both. But I do feel the informals can, can give you some information quickly. And I would say, once those four cornerstones are established, we've even talked about this, I don't mean to monopolize this, Christine, I apologize. I think you can go in, and we could talk about this, you could go in and do an informal on an episode that's not a cornerstone, so that I think, once you've established that teachers have these cornerstones established, you could go into a classroom looking at one of the other episodes and do an informal observation on that, even though those are supposed to be the targeted formal observation areas. So I think there's some flexibility, some different things. And I think the teachers have had feedback.
And the idea is over the three years to try to see all the four cornerstones and all five episodes?
Yes.
And that's why it's over a three-year period.
Yeah. Good thing, yeah, because I think there's a few I...
And I think for, for board members too, this is, this is hard, because I look back a couple of years ago, remember we started talking about the language of Thoughtful Classroom? And now we talk the language. And for you guys, it's, you know, you're hearing about it, but actually not involved. So it's, it's got to be difficult. So we talk about, you know, the episodes or we talk about what Dimension 10 is. If we talk about the cornerstone, there are four down and we look at, so it's hard for you, I know. So what we did, when we talked about planning some professional development this year for board members, I actually want to show you the stages dashboard that we have as administrators, okay? And it will make much more sense to you to figure this out. I personally think that, so our principals have done, I don't even want to give you, to give us a number, but the numbers of times that they've been in classrooms this year with every teacher, at least three to four times, gives us lots of feedback about how the teacher's doing with the basis of the rubrics that we're looking at. So it's been, I think, and it's not easy. I underline that. And they have done a fantastic job with the understanding too, that in the middle school that's been administered, that we've been lacking and they've still come forward, but doing a lot of good stuff. So we'd like to add that to some PD for next year. That'd be one of my goals as your superintendent, to, to have junctures when we can, at an SAU board meeting, take a half an hour and present and show you and actually have you use it, look at it. Because when we're talking about that next year, I'm thrilled with the Thoughtful Classroom, I am. Because before this, I think the board had mentioned me, my first year I came, they wanted to have an evaluation system for tech staff members. And we looked and we looked and we started. We're there now. I'm meeting with Porter and Jerry in the next two weeks to do their evaluation. What they have to bring to me is all of the paperwork signed off by teachers and them of all the people they've observed and all the people they've evaluated. And that, now for the first time, I feel like we will have something in everyone's file. Okay, so picture this for three or four or five years. We now have the, we now have what we have been looking for and wishing for due to the work of your administrators. So once you see it all and once you, we continue to talk about it, this to me is a great, really good system. I've seen many of them. We lost one because we didn't, we look at the one we had before and the one we have now, it's just so different, so.
And the other thing too, while our administrators are writing up three informals, they're in classrooms usually on a daily basis. So I don't want to give anyone the impression that they're only in a given teacher's classroom three times during the year. And I know that was something that Bethany and I chatted about a lot this year and she, she thought about every time she was in a classroom and she thought, wow, you know, if I could have actually written them up, she would have had 20 or 30 or, you know, on every single teacher. But it's just the, the time to stop and reflect and write up, we do, you know, the three to four a year.
Yeah, I could just add one more thing to it. I think what really has made me, impressed me about the Thoughtful Classroom is that it is a cultural change with the teachers as well. They know the dimensions, they know what we're looking for. They know when we come in, you know, there's, there's going to be that time when there's not a lot happening, we're coming, walking in and there's that, and they know that that one time is not going to be the time when we're going to base their teaching profession and their teaching skills on that one day. So they're thinking about it too. We, you mentioned Dimension 10. I think that's the one that eventually is going to become one of the most important ones for me, because that's the value-added, way back when we went with Scott Marion down in Boston and training with him, one of the things that my group was talking about that impressed me was, and they called it value-added, that may be a bad term, but it's not just when you shut your doors and teach, it's all those other things that makes a great teacher. And all, you know, the, everything from the chaperoning to relationships with the kids, going to the games and that type of stuff. And that's really, that Dimension 10 is, really picks that up and it's made teachers when they go over and look and say, gee, there is more than just shutting the door. And I think that's a change that they're, it's a welcome change. And I, I think they're embracing it, so.
Yeah. Yeah, the professional practice, that Dimension 10's a really important one. And we did, our multiple measures subcommittee was struggling a little bit at one point, especially in that highly effective category. And we thought, how, you know, everything we're saying, we started talking about what would make up that highly effective category. We were looking at Thoughtful Classroom and looking at each of the indicators. Everything we talked about, we said, no, we want all of our teachers to do that, so that would be effective. So what actually goes in that highly effective category? And we did a really neat activity with the A-team, our administrative team, and we just did a brainstorm of, you know, what makes a highly effective teacher. So we actually then, our group looked through all of that, we actually coded it. So this would be an episode, which the episodes, it's the five episodes of effective instruction. And that is, you know, how you actually move students through the learning process. And that, so we actually coded it, oh, this is, you know, a cornerstone, this is an episode and this is professional practice. And we kind of just threw it all out there and we came up with our highly effective category, so.
So with the Dimension 10, there's nothing.
Yeah, so we haven't finished it yet. We finished. That was a piece that we were working on and we had to go back to our Dimension 10 group to get more feedback from them. We have stuff labeled, but we had to pull that group in for that.
Yeah, it's more...
So it will be, yeah. So I should have put draft across these, I printed them all and thought, oh, I didn't put draft, I didn't want to waste the paper. So it's definitely a draft. And I'll probably have a more formal presentation, probably at an SAU board meeting in the fall, talking more about, you know, even going back two years ago, where were we, you know, what's the work we've done and kind of bring everything together, because we really are nearing the end of our work, which is exciting.
So I just want to thank Christine. This has been a lot of work for several years and I've been on several of these committees with her and her ability to facilitate all of this work and bring all the different groups together. It's messy work, it's time-consuming, but I'm really excited about this, you know, this culmination of work that, that under her leadership, we've been able to, to put together. So, and I know we're, we're just about there, so, but, but thank you.
Yeah. And thank you, yeah. Amy's been a great part of that committee. I don't know what we would do without her. It's wonderful to have that perspective. Not only is she knowledgeable about, I mean, she could probably be doing observations, she knows Thoughtful Classroom so well, but, you know, she, she sometimes will bring that outside perspective too, and support perspective. So it's been a lot of fun work. I feel like I'll, you know, miss our group getting together. It's, it's been, it was kind of a push at the end to try to get all of this in, to try to finish it up, so we could then work with administrators over the summer and it was a big push. But it was kind of nice to have our meetings clung together, because we really were very productive.
Yeah.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The last item on informational policy, the KEB policy, Peter's going to address that for a minute.
Just for a second, as you know, that boards, one of the duties of the board is to look at policies and develop policies. And once you have them, so in talking with the policy committee and others, it might be good if we look at a few when things come up, so we can, sometimes you may hear as a board, a complaint about something or something's happening, the first thing you should think of when you hear from a parent is, do we have a policy about that? Or who should you direct them to? The board member wants to be the last one in the chain, okay? We do that for a lot of reasons. And mostly it's to keep you over here, because you're hiring people that hopefully can solve a lot of those issues and do mostly every single day, whether it's, you know, bussing, favorite topic of Betty's, or any other thing. We should be able to do that first. So the policy's in place for that reason, and I want to share that one with you, and that's why we put it in. So people, you're, you're going to, now that they, when they know you're a board member, they're going to call you, they're going to see you at a game, they're going to tell you something. And the first thing should be, have you talked to your child's teacher? Have you talked to the principal? Have you talked to the superintendent? Have you talked to the business administrator? Have you, you know, you want to, you want to think you're in the backseat, okay? Almost all the time. And then there are some things that I will, if something comes to my level, the principal level, we'll try and deal with it. If we can't, we certainly will let you know and go from there. It's really to keep you, because remember, you can't, you're not a board member when you're, if you're not at this table. And that's sometimes hard for, for people in towns to think about, like, what does that mean? You can't, you can't vote on anything unless you're together. And so if we're saying, oh yeah, we're going to do this, well, that's not going to happen or might happen, but it only can happen by a vote of the board, okay? So think policy, we'll try and do more and more of this, but I think it's important to kind of develop that, because if we had no policy and no structure, you can see how that would get muddled in a lot of ways, okay? So I wanted just to put that on. We'll probably talk in non-public a little further about some exact instances where I can speak to you about, but I wanted to make sure you had this, sure, okay? So thank you.
Great. Thank you. We don't have any action items this evening? Great. So we need to go into non-public briefly, so.
Motion to enter into non-public.
Second.
Do we do a meeting or do we?
Is it roll call?
Roll call.
Okay. So roll call?
Manning, yes.
Prescott, yes.
Casey, yes.
Kuzma, yes.